Okay, good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 PM. We're gonna open the public meeting and we're gonna get going. So thanks for joining. Do I turn over to the moderator now, Esther?
Nope, the moderator doesn't have a role here this evening there. I think Chris is here just to kind of get a handle on for the deliberative session.
That's accurate, yes.
I do have two issues for public hearing before the public hearing on the budget.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go and then I'll turn it over to you, Dawn, for the operating budget warrant. Does that sound good?
Yes, do we need you to read the warrant article now or do we just talk about it?
You can read it, but I want to do, can I do my two first?
Yes, I'm just trying to find my copy of the warrant article. I'm not sure if I have it.
That's okay, I can find it for you.
Okay, great. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Dawn, I sent it to you today.
Oh, is that the one that you sent to me today? That's right, you did, Sarah. Sorry, thank you. I'm looking for Kayla to send it to me. I mean, I'm like, wait, it's not in here. Yeah, thank you.
So we have a couple under RSA 19820, which is unanticipated funds. We've had one public hearing about the initial round of the Essar funds that we got, the $200 per student. And the board accepted those funds and let us expend those funds as unanticipated revenue. There is now two more sources of funding coming in that are unanticipated revenue that come under still RSA 198:20. One is from Health Trust, our insurance company. They had a surplus, so they kicked back money to districts for that. That will come in as unanticipated revenue and just need the board to accept those funds. And then our other situation is we did apply for the second round of funding was that $10 million in the Essa. So beyond the $200 per student, if you had expended that already, which we did on COVID-related expenses, there was another pool of money you could apply for above and beyond if you had spent the $200 per student, which Exeter schools did. And so everyone that applied for that additional money from the state, they prorated it to equalize out how much they gave New Hampshire Department of Ed. And it came out to about 66% that we got back of what we requested above and beyond that initial round of funding. So we got back an additional, I think it was around $9,000. Does that sound right, Molly? $9,000, is that figure? I'm pretty sure that's about what we got back for the other $10 million.
I'd have to check the spread sheet if that sounds about right.
Yep, so what that means is we will, I would ask the board to accept those funds and to expend, because again, those that we put those to those expenses we already paid for related to COVID, for example, supplies, PPE, additional Chromebooks, things like that. So those, you had to have expended that before that January, that December 30th deadline, which we did. We applied, we got 66% of that second round back for Exeter schools. So one is to accept the unanticipated revenue from Health Trust. And the second is to accept and expend the unanticipated revenue from the second round of the supplemental Essar funds from DOE.
Do you need two motions or can we do it in one?
You can do it in the public meeting.
Sorry.
So this is just the public hearing for feedback on that. And then when we go into the meeting, you can decide how you want to do that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, do we know how much it is from Health Trust yet?
Yeah, I think, Molly, can you look that up? I think it's around $80,000. It's 80 and change, yeah. And that's gonna come right in as unanticipated revenue. We didn't expend that because that's a different pot of money and comes in as unanticipated revenue that we have to leave as unanticipated revenue. So it'll offset the bottom line at the end of the year. It'll go into that fund balance at the end of the year when revenue comes over. So you'll see that there. So essentially, it gets returned to the taxpayers to offset tax rate.
Yes.
Any other questions on either one of those items?
Can I ask a follow-up question about that $80,000? So that's not to be spent on other COVID-related expenses for the school?
Correct, that comes in only as unanticipated revenue. That came from Health Trust, a different unanticipated revenue source. The other funds we had to, we had to have already spent the money to apply for the money essentially, because it had to be spent by that December 30th and in use. So that's the difference why we, it's two different, it's two different things. And actually Molly put in the chat, it was $87,927 from Health Trust.
Thank you, Molly.
And Sarah, just to sort of add a little something to what you were asking, that whenever in the past we've gotten it back from Health Trust, you know, there are mechanisms by which, isn't there some of this that we can spend at the end of the year if there are needs, if we vote on that? Any unanticipated fund balance, we typically return it or most of it, but, right?
Essentially, Dawn, you're not, you're not expending that $87,000, but what it does is it boosts that other, do you say it boosts that bottom line? You may decide to spend down more of the regular fund balance because you have this unanticipated revenue to offset that bottom line. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we could if we needed it for COVID expenses or something that came. We're gonna...
Dawn, we can't hear you. You're frozen.
Yep. I'm hoping she comes back.
Yeah. Dawn, you were frozen, you were frozen for like 20 seconds.
Okay, um, so just that we could expend this on COVID-related issues if we needed to at the end of the year, but we don't have to spend it on that or anything else at this point.
Essentially, yeah, it's a little confusing, the language, but what it does is it boosts that bottom line. You still are returning that particular unanticipated revenue to the taxpayers, but it frees up other monies that you would return because you usually return around a certain amount.
Yeah.
Does that help? Everybody with me on that? Any other questions on either one of those two items or feedback? All right, that being said, Dawn, you're opening up the public hearing portion on the FY '22 budget under warrant article number one, the proposed operating budget.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm gonna do is read the warrant article first and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the drivers for the budget for fiscal year 2122. So the warrant is written as, "Shall the district raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth, set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $22,161,571. Should this article be the default budget, it'll be $21,939,000."
Dawn, you're breaking up again.
Okay.
Go to just before the $21 million figure.
Okay.
Hey, Dawn, if you shut your video off, you might have better luck with not freezing. And just keep your audio on.
Okay, so let's try that. I can actually move if I need to. Sorry about that. The default budget shall be $21,939,729, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Exeter School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 41310 and 16 to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. The school board recommends $22,161,571. Did I get through that?
You did.
Okay, good. I was worried you were just gonna shut up. Okay. So the overall increase for this budget is, over last year's budget, is 2.95%. Most of the drivers of this budget are what are contractual, which means salaries, other negotiated services or agreements that we are required, that have already been voted on. Other things in here, the biggest sort of driver is the insurance and FICA benefits, which is up $673,000 from last year, which the increase is less than that amount. But if you look at sort of the number of buckets that are in here, salaries were actually reduced. And that is in relation to retirements.
Dawn, you were frozen. Go back to the salaries part.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So the salaries was reduced about $200,000, which is, takes into account retirees that we had last year and then new hires coming in this year at a little bit of a lower rate. Most of the other contracted services remain consistent with small increases overall. I don't know if there's, there's nothing really specific. The biggest driver is the insurance and the employer portion that we're required to pay. That's about all I have.
Sarah's gonna rejoin in a second. She's having technical difficulties. I think she was doing another part, right, Dawn?
Yes, she's gonna read the second warrant article, which is for the Special Education Expandable Trust Fund.
So give her a second, I think.
Yep.
Dawn, I just want to make sure it's Esther. Did you also speak to the retirement?
Yes, I just said that the retirements that happened last year was an overall savings of around $200,000 and that that's reflected here in this budget, the hires that came in at lower rates.
And the increased percentage of our retirement costs.
Yeah, that is rolled into the salary portion as well. Yes. Thank you, Esther.
Yeah, that's just, that was a large increase. They reset the rate of pay on the interest of what an employer has to pay and that increased that budget quite a bit.
Yeah, and that's in the insurance FICA benefits line, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And that's the largest increase. So they, just to say again, what Esther, they increased the rate for what really is the biggest driver of this increase in the budget. The increase is more than actually our budget is over last year.
Dawn, Sarah's back now.
Okay, Sarah, are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. This is the Special Education Expandable Trust Fund. The warrant proposed is to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $75,000 to be placed in the Special Education Expandable Trust Fund, previously established for the unanticipated special education costs at Exeter Elementary School. The sum to come from June 30th fund ballot is available for transfer on July 30th. No additional amount shall be raised from taxation. The Exeter School Board recommends this appropriation and requires a majority, a majority vote. My notes tell me this is our second year that this warrant article is going forth. We did it last year and it was passed by the voters for $75,000 for unanticipated costs. And we're hoping to continue with this so that we can support this sort of unexpected, potentially high-cost area for education for special education students.
Great. Dawn?
I don't have anything else to add. Are there any questions?
I think the important piece, if people are watching this as a recorded video later, is to know that it does not increase taxation for our town, that it creates, it puts funds into a trust to be used when they're unanticipated so that it doesn't affect each budget or impact the taxpayer in the next year.
I think it's right to say, Sarah and Dawn, that the idea here is to build this store of funds to smooth out the budget over the long term to give us a cushion for this large item, which is often unpredictable. Is that right?
That's exactly right. It's, we never know when these are gonna come in and they could come in at any time into the district and they're, can be very costly. We, you know, build in what we know about, but we never know. And we've had this come up in the past where, you know, we've had to come up with the funds out of somewhere to accommodate one of the student who may need this type of intervention.
Right. Great. Esther, what is the next step now? Do we?
Seeing no other comments or input, and I double-checked the chat just to see, just in case, and there's nothing there, you can close the public hearing and then open the board meeting.
Great, so public meeting, hearing is now closed at 5:45. Let's open the regular Exeter School Board meeting. Called order, should we assume the pledge or should we do the pledge?
I say let's do it.
Let's do the pledge, alright.
Do the pledge.
Alright, ready? This, that's a good idea. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Outstanding. All right, public input. Is anyone from the public here who'd like to speak? I don't think so. Esther, do you see anyone? All right, the PTO update. Do we have a PTO update?
So, me unable to...
You're breaking up, Dawn.
I didn't read that, if that's okay. Sorry.
There you go.
Allison isn't able to make it, but she sent an update to Esther and I today.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and read that. The fiscal year 21 budget, despite our limited fundraising abilities this year, we still hope to be able to support the schools as consistently as we have had during pre-COVID. There is room in the budget for over and above school requested items, but should COVID precautions continue into 2021, we need to be conservative in order to sustain. If principals or assistant principals have specific needs, please feel free to present to the PTO as those needs arise. For fundraising, Box Tops has raised $139 towards the $2,000 goal. We'd love to see this increase considerably. As of December 31st, only 73 people are supporting through the Box Tops app. Everyone, please download the app. That's the easiest way. You can scan your receipts and those funds will go directly to your PTO. The EcoSmith textile bins have yielded over $2,400 thus far this year. Now's a perfect time to clean out closets and bagged goods and put them in the bins out back in the Lincoln Street School parking lot, sorry, in the side of the Lincoln Street School parking lot. Hannaford Helps chose Main Street School this year. The PTO is managing that donation of over $5,000 on the school's behalf. The Hannaford reusable bag program has also chosen the Exeter PTO for January. So for every $2.50 of a reusable Hannaford bag that's purchased, the PTO will receive $1 back. For the fiscal year 2021, restaurants are still an option, but not likely until the weather is nicer. Details are still being worked out. MSS and LSS Junior Blue Hawk Spirit Wear has raps. The total profit was around $600. There are a few missing items that will be picked up this week and a few additional items have been purchased by the PTO to sell a raffle off at a later time. The teacher staff raffle is back on the table as a possible option for the spring. School staffs are on board for launching just prior to April vacation. The Lincoln Street Yearbook will not be pursuing the fundraiser this year, given the restrictions with the schools. They do have some extras for sale from last year. If you didn't get a book, you can reach out if you'd like to purchase one. The January PTO meeting is canceled. The next meeting will be Wednesday, February 10th at 5:30 via Zoom. The March PTO meeting will be a little different. They're looking to do something fun with a trivia night with families. The virtual race for Get Fit in May is moving ahead. Registration outreach will be communicated soon. The next Get Fit in May meeting is Wednesday, January 20th at 5:30 via Zoom. Volunteers still needed as always, a PTO co-president, a secretary and a few more fundraising volunteers. Again, the next PTO meeting is Wednesday, February 10th at 5:30 PM via Zoom. And that will be communicated by the principals. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn, very much. So the FY '22 proposed budget. Esther, is that you're right? There you go.
Sure, yes, that's just on there to have the board have any further discussion on the information you heard or worked through at the public hearing. And so you kind of have three different things. The first thing would be to adopt the proposed FY budget that you just discussed for, to be, for that number to be presented at the deliberative session. But you need to take a vote as to whether you want to adopt that with, as presented at the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed budget.
As presented.
As presented this evening, yes.
I'll second, second. So roll call, vote.
Aye.
Sarah Edwards.
Aye.
Patty Saret.
Aye.
Neil Blakeney. Okay, so we're good there.
And then we have the, to accept the Health Trust funds as unanticipated revenue.
So motion, is there a motion for that?
I can make a motion to accept the Health Trust revenue and also, one at a time? Do you need to do one at a time?
You can do both at the same.
Okay, and make a motion to accept the PPE equipment, what, what, sorry?
Accept and expand.
And expand the...
Supplemental Essar funds.
Supplemental Essar funds.
I'll second that. Roll call, vote. Dawn?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Patty?
Aye.
Neil is aye. Okay, good. Good to go, Esther?
Sure.
So now it's over to you for the administrative update.
All right, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the deliberative session and I'm glad Chris is here because this is his bailiwick. We did connect today and talk about an alternative location due to the ability, in case we get participants to be able to socially distance, wear masks, an alternative room for individuals that may choose not to wear masks. Our best location for that is Exeter High School. So I have, Chris has okayed that for it to be the venue for the deliberative session on February 2nd at 5:30. The reason we're doing that again is to allow for social distancing for participants as well as to have an alternative room that I can zoom the meeting into and have questions if they ask for people that choose not to wear a mask. There'll be an alternative place for those folks as requested by the moderator. I don't know, Chris, if you have anything to add to that or feel free?
I don't. You've done a great job. Your recommendations are prudent and I think that's a good way of handling it.
So just double-checking and notifying the board that the moderator has set that location for, again, February 2nd at 5:30, deliberative session at Exeter High School. So that will occur there.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Seeing as Exeter has a mask mandate, I guess I'm just curious why we need to provide without accommodations for people without masks and maybe you're not sure and I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm just curious.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
So the easiest answer to that, I don't know if it's the right answer or not, but the folks who would be entitled to discuss the matters at deliberative session have a constitutional right to do that under the state law. Meaning that to the extent that there is any friction between state, especially the state constitution and local ordinances, the state constitution trumps that. It's arguable whether that would happen or not, but quite frankly, under the circumstances, I think this is probably the best way to go about it and avoid some sort of state constitutional challenge about whether or not somebody's been denied a substantive due process right to comment at the deliberative session. It's my hope that it doesn't come to pass. There's not gonna be any unmasked people. Given, I mean, what we saw last year, there's only a few participants anyway, so. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but that's the answer that I have.
No, you know, I like, I understand the possible need for it anyway. I was just sort of curious seeing since we have a mask mandate here. So thank you for that.
Can I just ask a quick question? Esther and Chris, has there been any discussion about holding it outside versus inside for people that choose and that don't feel comfortable going inside even masked?
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't discussed that. Frankly, I haven't really thought about it. There was, there was a recent proposed legislation to have an alternate form of a meeting like this. Right now, I think it's tied up in a committee in the House, the State House of Representatives or whatever its equivalent is. So the answer to your question is no. I have not thought about that. And I haven't thought through the logistics of doing that. I mean, would you have a Zoom, a Zoom screen outside? I mean, what do you think? I'm not ridiculing or anything like that. I'm actually asking, how would that logistically work?
I'm only asking because I'm also the school district clerk for the co-op and I know that that's something that, that they are entertaining. And Molly, I know, was on that, that Zoom last week. And I know they're meeting, you know, this Friday to go through and whatnot. But there are specific board members that do not feel comfortable attending an indoor deliberative session and would only attend if there were outdoors.
So Sue, that's because the deliberative session gets, at the co-op, gets about 450 to 550 people is in general, and ours usually gets about 11.
Yeah, and it doesn't even get 450 people. So, but yes.
So we did, we did talk about that at the SLT outside, but we didn't feel like, we felt like people would be able to spread out way beyond the six feet in the auditorium at Exeter High School, given our crowd capacity that we normally have as anticipated by the public hearing and the audience we have here tonight. That's, it seems like that's pretty consistent with past years. We don't have anything on our warrant article that's, I would deem controversial. So we anticipate a similar crowd. If there is, for some reason, 500 people that show up for the Exeter Elementary, we certainly will have alternative classrooms on hold and I will zoom those in, you know? That's the beauty of the high school, that it is large enough that I can have access to a whole bunch of other classrooms should that need arise. But we don't anticipate that with this particular meeting. Does that make sense, Sue?
It absolutely does. It absolutely does. I just was polling to see, you know, how people feel.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking the question, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
So Esther, I just had a quick question. So everyone can participate through Zoom?
We will, we will offer, the meeting will be held in a public forum. We will zoom it into the room. I will have to ask, and Chris, maybe you know the answer to that, do we offer it also on Zoom?
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Esther's saying is we'll zoom it into other rooms within the school so we can, you know, segregate people. so we can, you know, segregate people who don't want to wear masks.
Like an audio feed, so to speak, but they still, they still have to be in person on site to ask a question, have input, et cetera. And the reason for that is that the RSA, the alternative to Zoom, if you chose to do that, which you could, you do have to put on the Warren article that the whole process is null and void because it was on Zoom. So it was, it was, doesn't really make sense to have a deliberative session and then have a Warren article that says you can null and void the whole process.
Correct.
So. All right.
All right, we are, we're good? So Esther, now it's, I think it's over to you, if that's right, your administrative update, is that right?
Sorry, can I just, there has a question.
Can I ask a follow-up? Sorry, I may have missed this. But for the board members, are we to be there in person masked?
Yes, and we will, we have that large stage on Exeter High School where you can be probably 12 to 20 feet apart, should you choose to do that masked. Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Awesome. Now on to my report, Neil, is that what you'd like?
Yes, please.
All right. Molly, financial update?
So we did not include a financial in your packet this go around because we're trying to finalize all the additional revenues that we had. So what I've asked our accountants to do, starting next month, typically, we do it towards the very end of the year, but starting next month to give everybody their fund balance, so not only the expense side of the house, but the revenue side as well, so we can start to get a really good picture of where we are at because we have had those additional monies come in. So we are looking in great shape, but we didn't include a financial in your packet today just so we could finalize those numbers and come with, come with more final numbers next month for you. Did anybody have any questions?
Thank you for doing that running total. That's a great idea. I know the sound. All right, so are we good there, Esther?
I believe so. No questions for Molly. I just want to give you an update on the Main Street principal search. We have started that process. We currently have over, the application process closed. We have over 50 applicants for that position, so a large pool of candidates. The search committee has met for an orientation as well as we had met with all the Main Street staff and asked for their input for qualities and characteristics they were looking for in the incoming principal, as well as I held a parent focus group on Tuesday, January 5th, that was gathered information on qualities and characteristics the community members' parents were looking for. I've collated that, and we'll have that available to the search committee as they interview their first round candidates, which will be on Friday, January 22nd. After that, on the 29th, semifinalist interviews will be with SAU principals, meaning all of our building level principals across the SAU, as well as central office administrators. Following that, there'll be a third round of semifinalists on Monday, February 8th. Those, in all likelihood, two candidates will somehow tour the school, and depending on where we are on the pandemic, may be a virtual tour, it may be an in-person tour, et cetera, et cetera. There will be opportunities for a parent forum, a support staff forum, a teacher forum, visits, interview, a final interview with the superintendent. Both candidates will have. And then that evening on Monday, February 8th, there will be a forum with the school board and parents with the two candidates. After that, the superintendent will be prepared to make a final recommendation to the school board for appointment on Tuesday, at the Tuesday, February 16th board meeting. So if all goes well and according to plan, we, you should, as a board, have felt comfortable in accepting the recommendation and have named an incoming principal before February vacation. So that's our timeline as of yet. So far, things seem to be going well, and the timeline is on point. We have a wonderful committee, and I want to thank board member Dawn Bullins. As you know, you were appointed to be the board member representation on that committee. We have a parent, Janine Richards, is involved in that committee. Two administrators, Kate Lucas from Stratum and Drew Bearstow from Lincoln Street. We have teachers Nicole Bell, Marnie Byrd, Jen Benicki. We have Abby Hood representing the special ed, Carla Putney representing curriculum, and Paula Galing recommending, representing the paraprofessional. So we have a very well-rounded, I think, selecting, first round selection committee. So like I said, they've come up with some great questions. They worked at our orientation to develop their own questions based on their area of expertise. And we will move forward with that first round on the 22nd. So again, a public thank you to all those members of the committee as well as Dawn for the work they've done so far and the continued work.
Esther, we know Steve is irreplaceable, but I would like to ask, looking at the resumes that's floating on your desk, it sounds like it's a pretty good crop, right?
Yes.
As expected. Thank you.
Moving on, any questions on that process or input? Seeing none, I'm going to move right along. The balanced scorecard, just reminding board members, you started to, or maybe you finished putting input into that. Chris Andrews, you presented that about, remember it has knowledge, skills, and mindsets for a balanced scorecard in different categories of community, et cetera. So if you just want to take another look at that in your limited free time, I'm sure if you want to add anything to that, Chris is still have those open for you guys in those Google Sheets. And I would love to just make sure the Exeter board has had a voice into those. If you don't have that link, just email me separately, and I'll get Chris to send you that link again to those Google Sheets. You can take a look and think about anything else you might want to add on that scorecard. As you recall, that's that scorecard, trying to figure out how to really give a nice representation of the growth that we're making with our students, with our educators, and with our community in all those three areas. So trying to develop a reporting system that gives good metrics beyond our quote-unquote "traditional" metrics like graduation rate, et cetera.
Esther, I think, at least for my case, so much has happened. I'm not sure where it is. Maybe it's worth just sending it to everyone again, asking Chris to do that.
Sure, we'll do that.
Thank you.
And just want to remind people that Neil has announced he is not running again. We will miss you, Neil, for sure. And so that means there is open seats on the board, and the filing dates, which is done at the SAU. So you can do that, you can file at the SAU, is from January 20th through January 29th. Monday through Friday, the office is open to pick up that paperwork and file right here. You can do the work right here from 7:30 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon. The last Friday, January 29th, the office will be open for filing from 7:30 in the morning to 5:00 at night. Again, that's right here at the Tuck Learning Campus at SAU 16. And the receptionist will have the filing paperwork available for you to fill out and file right here. So let's get some good people that are willing to spend just, what do we always say? Oh, it's only a meeting a month.
Yeah, only a meeting a month.
As we all know, it's a little more than that, but feel free to contact me if you're interested or any of your board members to get kind of what the commitment is and what the role is. If any of you know anyone interested, please encourage them to file. That would be awesome. I think that's all I had under our section for tonight.
Great. Thank you. All right, so administrative matters, the public board meeting minutes from December 15th. Anyone had a chance to look at, who wants a chance to look at? Anyone have the edits? All right, how about entertaining a motion to accept as presented? Anyone want to do that?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented from the December 15th meeting.
I'll second that. Roll call vote. Dawn?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Patty?
Aye.
Neil's eye. Thank you. All right, Mr. Adler, sir, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Blaken, and thank you for your kind words. So a couple of these are familiar. I shared similar news in, at the December meeting. We are preparing for sharing the first semester report, the Alma Report Card. That'll be going, the semester ends January 22nd, and then that report will go home on January 29th. And it's really designed to help parents learn about their child's both academic and social progress. And it's really, it's a reporting system that's designed to help identify the competencies that students have been learning in different subject areas. We will be having a presentation, a parent presentation virtually by Zoom on Wednesday, January 20th, 2021, just to give parents information in advance about what they can anticipate and answer any questions that they might have. So hopefully, that'll be helpful. Beth and Renee have been working really hard to organize interventions for students needing support in either reading or math, as long, as well as with the support of Carla Putney. And those have been taking place, and training is being provided for the interventionists at the school. One of the projects I got a kick out of this month was the kindergarten has a project-based learning unit they're doing around the Exeter community, and it involves drawings and recordings all about different parts of the community, community members, things like the Exeter Hospital, local veterinarians. And then there was a mini field trip to St. Vincent's right before the holidays as well, where kids could see where some families get food in our community. I know that Mr. Bearstow will give quite a bit of information about Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday and the work being done by the DEIJ committee, so I won't go into all the details. But I do want to thank Carla Putney and Julie Lambert for that work, as well as the members of the BIPOC Committee who supported and gave us good input for planning for his birthday. And then just want to give you an update. We have had four fire drills during the months of November and December with the help of the Exeter Fire Department. So we still continue to do our safety drills, which is important to do. Having fewer kids in the building, we were out really fast. One of the only advantages of not having as many, as many students. Coats for Kids, Main Street School, joined with the Exeter firefighters for Operation Warren to provide brand-new winter coats to students in need. This is a partnership that we've been working with the firefighters since 2012. And we really, they've been able to help us provide hundreds of free winter coats to students in the Seacoast area. And then lastly, just want to share with you that we do have a book group that Carla Putney's organized. It's called, the staff, it's, can volunteer to read the book Onward by Alina Egwilar, and which focuses on the attitudes and behaviors of resilience. And one of the things that Egwilar says is resilience is how we weather the storms in our lives and rebound after something difficult. And certainly, in this time period, resilience is something we are all going to need as, as there are many difficulties in these times. So staff has continued to work hard. We are excited. It feels like it's been quite some time since we were in the building, and we are looking forward to those students who are participating in person returning on Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Mr. Bearstow?
All right, many similar updates for, for Lincoln Street School with a few, few different dates and things. One thing, however, that Lincoln Street School is working on right now that Main Street is not working on is state standardized testing. We were recently notified that we do indeed need to complete a standardized test for the state. And so we have been organizing ourselves, getting ready to have children take batch, and it's kind of gone back and forth, but we'll have kids who are in person taking that test on three different sessions where they are in school, which, because we're split into two different cohorts, that's actually six days that we're devoting to having in-person kids take this test. Students who are remote, whose parents have not opted them out, will take, obviously, will, will take this test because it's computerized. They'll take it at home with a teacher proctoring it from, obviously, remotely. So we do have links for opting out of this test. Parents obviously have the option to do so. That is found on our website and on a few of my last recent bulletins that I've put out. So that is certainly accessible if anybody is interested in doing so. We expect to have to take another, this standardized test that we're taking this coming week is actually testing current students on their last year's standards. We expect to have to take another standardized test in May and June that is more typical to the SAS test that will be testing the students on this year's materials. And that will be, that test will be more comprehensive than this one.
Drew, good question. So which, what is the test that is optional or a parent can opt out of?
Technically, all the standardized tests, parents can opt out of them. This one right now, it's, they're calling it an interim test. So it's, the fewer questions should take the students a little bit less time to take. Again, it's on last year's material. And we're not overly clear what will be done with the information that the, that the state gets from it. I think they just, they need to have something to know where students are after a crazy educational year, if I mean.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's see. Next up, just as we're, just as Steve said, we are eager to get back into the school. Tomorrow, Wednesday, is going to be our transition day for in-person or for any staff who is transitioning from one form of education to the next. There'll be a transition form. Students who have been remote, well, it'll be a regular learning day. And then, starting on Thursday and Friday, will be our regular white and blue scheduled day. And we too are in the process of putting our grades together for the first semester of school. And so our third grade team has been working diligently on learning Alma, which is the reporting tool that the K-2 students used last year that Steve spoke about earlier. So students in our third grade classes will receive a report card via Alma, and students in fourth and fifth grade will be assessed in a similar way, you know, on a day-to-day basis in their classrooms. But the report that the parents will receive on the students' learning will look a little bit different. We haven't made that transition to Alma for the fourth and fifth grade quite yet. We too are, we are going to be sending out, actually, we just recorded a presentation today. Ms. Lambert, Ms. Donnelly, myself recorded a presentation today that we will be sending out on Thursday for parents to review. And we'll have a PDF on there and a sample report card that we'll send out at the same time. And then on the 21st, which is the day after Main Street School's presentation, we're going to be hosting a question and answer session for anybody who wants to get some more details on what the presentation includes. So please be on the lookout for that. And I'm going to hold off on any of the DEIJ updates, like our Martin Luther King Celebration at Main Street and Lincoln Street School for the DEIJ portion, put it all together in one package. But all in all, it's, it's been a crazy couple of weeks, and we're looking forward to getting, getting back at it, getting back in the swing of things.
Thank you, Mr. Bearstow. All right, members' reports, Dawn?
Let's see. On here is facilities use. I know that we talked about that. Didn't we talk about that at our last board meeting? I don't know if there's many, any updates to that. We certainly haven't met. Or I guess, at this point, we are still remaining, keeping our school remain for school business only, unfortunately not allowing any outside, outside sports or things like that. We usually allow to use our facilities just with COVID and safety precautions. We just feel that our school should be We just feel that our school should be left for learning right now to keep students as safe as possible. Anybody have anything to add on that? Or I don't think there have been any changes. Esther, have we had any new requests or anything?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So what else is on here? Sorry, I'm just getting, I was looking up some of the principal stuff and I'm trying to get back to my agenda here. The food service. Steve and Patrick and I have had a nice discussion regarding maybe some steps to move forward with this and supporting our community. We've all decided, to Steve's point, that the Wellness Committee is a great place to really start with that. So we're going to be looking at, Steve sent out some preliminary questions to the, the members to see if people can kind of come with their heads around, maybe some, some steps or solutions or other things that we could be doing or exploring to talk about at our next meeting, which is, Steve, do you have the, I think it's the twenty, the twenty-third, eight AM via Zoom? So we're looking forward to hopefully making, coming up with some ideas to make it a little bit easier for our community to access the free meals for their students. I think that's all I have to add there. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Sarah Edwards.
So the policy and negotiation committees haven't met since our last board meeting. And I just need to check in with Drew to see if Enhanced Learning has another meeting coming up soon.
We don't have any on the books, Sarah.
Yeah. That's what I thought. All the Enhanced Learning is COVID-related and organizing and planning, so understandable. So very brief.
Thank you. Patrick's not here. Patty Soret?
Yeah, so Drew will update, do the big update. My involvement in the anti-racist white parent slash caregiver affinity group has continued to be successful. We are going from two days a month to one day a month. We were doing a Wednesday and a Thursday group, but we found that one of the groups kind of fell off. So we're going to do it, we're going to continue through January. But the last official meeting with this group is on the twenty-first. But then we're going to probably send something to the principals to encourage people's participation for the next group that we hope to start in February. A lot of our focus has been to encourage the parents that are participating to reach out to their child's educators and just remain engaged and inquire about, for example, what they're doing to teach about Martin Luther King and offer support and, and just sort of get that conversation going so that it makes the conversation more comfortable, to be quite honest. And that's it for that committee. Safety and security meeting, I think our next one is this. I just asked Esther, it's next Thursday?
It's the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay. I had a question, Esther. It's obviously time to have shifted a little bit in our priorities, but I noticed that we're doing the fire drills. I'm assuming that once the children are back in school full-time, we will commence with the Alice drills? Okay.
Correct. And we all staff are, you know, participated in Alice Refresher. We're fini, we're finalizing that. I think there's, there's under a hundred and fifty people that haven't done that refresher SAU-wide. So most people have completed that Alice Refresher course also.
Great, good to know. Then I did include, I sent you all an email about the superintendent evaluation discussion. If you remember, at the joint board, there was a very long conversation about two bullet points on the process of the evaluation process. It's really, from what I understand, all other boards have accepted the changes that were made to process number one. Does this ring a bell to all of you, the email that I sent?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. If you have any significant input, feel free to share it with me. If you are, if you accept what the changes that were made to number one, then just make that clear to me and I'll pass that along during our next committee meeting.
How do you do? We need to vote on that or do you just need feedback individually from board members?
No, I'm just looking to collect verbal feedback. I'll take some notes if you guys have any. I think we kind of hammered it home already in the joint board meeting, so I'm thinking we're already there, but let me know if we're not.
I mean, I read through what I can give my feedback. It's, it seemed to make sense with the amendments that were proposed. It looked like a lot of hard work was done.
Yeah, yeah, I'm perfectly fine with verbiage.
I agree. I think it addressed the questions that were raised effectively, so thank you for doing all that work.
And there'll be more work for us to do on this and I'll keep you updated. We don't have another committee meeting on the books yet because we're waiting for everyone to get this input. And then we will, we'll schedule that meeting and then I'll let you know if we have to have some kind of a workshop or a non-public meeting to get our evaluation, our mid-year evaluation commentary together before the next joint board in February. That is a possibility. But I'll have to let you know, we haven't hammered out that process yet. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Neil, could I just, Patrick sent me a note, since he wasn't going to be here, that if I could just ask something about the DEIJ committee, he, that he wanted to ask about. I know that we were looking and then we approved to do one more training session and it seemed as though we couldn't get it all figured out, sort of the, the timing that was allotted. And he wanted to just get some feedback about what this board wanted to do about that. As I've been thinking about it, I wondered if, since we will be having some type of new board come March, if it's something that we should be holding off on so that a new member, because since we've already had two trainings, that a new member would sort of be pulled into that, that group, if you will, to get some training. And I just didn't know what people thought about it. And he was just sort of curious if others, their thought on whether it's something we should push to do again right away or if we, we all thought we should wait. Hey Patty, what do you think?
Um, I, I guess that makes sense. This is kind of a different topic. It's not a continuation, like the first two trainings were sort of, I feel like they piggybacked on one another a little bit more than this one, I think is going to be a little bit different. I thought it was going to be around how we use and engage in the, what are those things we adopted?
Principles or I forget.
Cultural competencies that are.
Yeah, right. And that would probably be good for any new board members to kind of start to get an understanding. So I would support that.
Man, I think, I think my last meeting was March, so I think you might want to push that April, right?
Yeah.
But so, I mean, my thought, my feedback, I'm not going to be there, so my feedback would be, it's a great training and you want to, you know, get someone, you know, a new member involved as soon as you can.
Sarah, what do you think?
I agree. I think it's a, a good way for a board member to, to start and to be included. I think it's, it's important when a person joins for several years for them to be included in board training because it's not often that we meet unless we're in a public forum. So that would be important. I think in terms of scheduling it, then just for the administrative piece, is that when would we know Esther who's elected to the board so that we could start planning that time? I don't think we can choose a date until we know who the members are.
Right, elections are March.
March, whatever the election day is, we usually know that evening.
Yes.
Jean, let me look at a calendar, whatever that Tuesday is.
The second or March the ninth.
March ninth, and our board meeting is March sixteenth. So actually, Neil, your last board meeting would be February. Because we'll have a new board person, March sixteenth.
Right on. Well, so you, okay, good. All right, is that good, Dawn?
Yeah, thank you. I think so. I guess we'll just, I'll pass on the information that we all kind of talked about. Maybe we should just wait and that would be better. See what's happening. Thank you all.
So cheers. I have nothing. I, I raised an issue in the joint board with Zucar's follow-up, but my thought is it's not on the agenda and Patrick's not here, so why don't we just hold off? There's no rush to that.
Well, I, actually, I would like to make one comment, Neil. Again, that was one of those conversations that went sideways and upside down. I completely got your point last night about all of the meetings and the extra meetings that people had to take on, but it was really due to the pandemic. And so I don't necessarily think we need to change the governance of the entire SAU and how we operate, but maybe we need to come up with a, the short-term processes when something like this occurs again. Because what was, what fell on deaf ears last night, I felt like it wasn't just that we had extra board meetings. The superintendent's office was also meeting with health professionals, meeting with safety and security people and vendors and PPE and local and state government. Like, it, it was well beyond meeting, the few extra meetings we had to endure over the summer. And that, I felt, was lost in last night's meeting, but I wasn't willing to jump into that battle of data bits that was going on last night. So anyway, I, I get your point, but I do think we should take the direction from our leadership on that because they're living it, like our leadership office.
I would just add, my, I've told others, I think that the work that Esther and Dave and Steve and Drew and Beth and Deanna Ray and the entire team have done is heroic. And I, I really mean that. I mean, it's just unbelievable in the worst possible circumstances and they're champs and they've done a great job. And then, so we can talk about the other stuff later, it's my, my preference, but thank you Patty for the feedback.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Neil, for your comments about the team. Appreciate it.
Absolutely true. You guys are just the best. You're world-class. Thank you. All right, old business, food and security.
Neil, can I just jump in for, for one quick second and just add, I, I missed my opportunity to give my DEIJ.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that I, I have a chance to get in there, so it doesn't have to be now. I just wanted to make sure it didn't get forgotten.
Mr. Bearstow, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So there, I, I wanted to take a chance to highlight all things DEIJ that are going on across our, the Exeter School District, and then obviously it ripples out beyond that to the entire SAU. And so I, I reached out to all the different.
Mr. Bearstow, I'd just like to add, I think this is a particularly timely topic. I appreciate you doing that.
Sure, sure. So I reached out across the, the district to identify all the different committees, some subcommittees, things like that, that are, that are going on simultaneously. And so there are thirteen different groups or subgroups that, that are carrying this work forward, which is, is kind of jaw-dropping and awe-inspiring, I guess, in a couple of different ways, just because it, it shows that this district and folks in this district want to move forward and recognize the importance of it. So I guess the, the most pressing item on the agenda right there on, that's happening right now that are, are the curriculum Subcommittee for the DEI, the Exeter Elementary School Districts has been working on is the Martin Luther King Celebration. And so Carla Putney, Julie Lambert, Abby Hood, worked primarily together in this and sought the feedback from our BIPOC affinity group to vet and overview that this product, this project. So the work that they're doing is really focusing on the legacy of what Dr. King stood for and what he would stand for today. And the hope is that, you know, the federal holiday is just one day, but their intention is to try and celebrate on his legacy throughout the, the entire month and, and beyond if, if it gets to that point. I think the two major points is that the civil rights, oops, the civil rights. Thanks, Esther. My notes disappeared when you did that. The Civil Rights Movement, it still continues. There's still a lot of work to be done. So that's like highlighting one, one part. And then another crucial aspect is to cultivate classroom communities where BIPOC children feel that they can contribute their diversity as opposed to shying away from it. So they're, they're focusing on three major strands based on what Dr. King stood for. One is service, and the essential question there is why is service important? The other second strand is activism. The essential question there is how can you make a difference and help others? And then the third strand is imagining our future. So how can the words or actions of others inspire you to seek equality and justice? So as you can see in this document that Esther screen shared, they gathered a ton of great resources that our teachers can use in the classroom to guide conversations and, you know, feed their, their hunger for, for knowledge. There's a variety, there's books, there's videos, there's all sorts of options there, talking guides, classroom guides. I mean, and so they just, they did an outstanding job and, and worked really hard to, to rethink the way that we address Martin Luther King Junior. So that is one, oh, and Lincoln Street School, part of this too. Our library and art departments are doing a joint project based their researching in library. The kids are going to be researching activists. And, and then in their art class are going to take the research and they're, they're understanding that they get from that project in the library. And they're going to be putting together a piece of art, might be a portrait, it might be poetry. It might be, it could come in all sorts of different forms. The kids will then sort of create a video and string it together to create just an outstanding, well-researched piece of art that documents everything that the kids learned. So we're really excited to see what comes of that. All right, so that is our curriculum Subcommittee. We have the SAU Committee, which will be meeting soon on the thirteenth, actually tomorrow. That has, their next meeting will focus on setting SAU-wide goals. The Exeter Elementary DEIJ Committee. So at the December meeting, we considered our individual roles as DEIJ influencers. We discussed internal and external resistance. And then we were tasked with finding a way to influence others prior to the January meeting. The January meeting for Exeter Elementary will be on the nineteenth of January. Then we have a leadership committee where Toy and Augustus, Abby Hood, Steve and myself meet together. We sort of engage and monitor all the subcommittees. We look at the progress, we brainstorm next steps. And December and January, we focus mostly on supporting and organizing the upcoming staff-wide professional development in February and then we're planning and delving into how holidays are celebrated, focusing mostly on December holidays. Let's see, there's the district curriculum coordinator meetings now include some components of our DG, DEIJ work in Exeter. Chris Andruski leads an SAU group of curriculum coordinators and teacher representatives to work with Toy and Augustus in this area. Similar initial training and self-reflections are occurring with this group. And they are working on setting goals as well. So we have a press, professional development committee focused on DEIJ. The PD Committee is working with two revs to develop our staff-wide February PD focused on deepening our understanding of the influence of identity and anti-racist practices. The PD is a continuation of our staff-wide DEIJ PD that occurred in September. And then we have a communication Subcommittee, which consists primarily of Steve and myself. And so we focus, most of this work is, is on focusing on MLK celebrations currently. Then there is, as you know, we have four different affinity groups. Then there is, as you know, we have four different affinity groups and we have an affinity group leadership committee. That met last month to touch base on how, and how often each group is meeting. I just touch base, think about future meetings and it's just a chance for leaders to touch base and figure out how. Everyone's proceeding and, and what directions. We can go in and, and learn, learn from each other in terms of the organization of those. Definity group, affinity groups. So the leadership affinity group. We have established a protocol for examining issues, dilemmas, circumstances related to DEIJ. And we collaborate with each other to develop appropriate responses and action plans. We share resources between each other and those, that group. I, I received the update from Toyin and Amanda about the BIPOC affinity group. So what I'm going to read is a, a portion of what they sent me. BIPOC families affinity group has met three times since established in the twenty twenty-one school year. There are a limited number of caregivers of color throughout the districts, so our group is intimate, yet passionate. The first meeting allowed for introductions followed by an activity to name some of the practice, practices that. We believe, they believe the school district should start, stop and continue. There was curiosity about how students are assigned to classrooms and teachers. And how this affects their ability to be successful in school. There was significant conversation, conversation around hiring practices. Including the DEIJ position that. They thought would help support these efforts. And at the December meeting, the group reviewed new curricular plans for MLK Day, as I mentioned. They gave feedback to the curriculum coordinators for the perspective or from the perspective of families, some of whom are also educators. And they just wanted to note that they are grateful for the space to connect, converse and invest in schools. And they're looking forward to more collaboration and co-creation of an anti-racist school community. And the Educators for Justice Affinity Group. Has been exploring resources vetted by the co-leaders. As well as creating a shared set of resources for members to further explore on their own. They discuss various scenario, scenarios that arise to support each other. There's approximately twenty staff members between MSS and LSS involved in that group. I have an update here from Marim for the White Ally Caregiver Affinity Group, but Sarah, or I'm sorry Patty, I, I don't want to. Step on your toes. Would you, do you want me to just go ahead and read it? Okay. The White Ally Caregiver Affinity Group. Has been meeting regularly every two weeks since September. We had two group meetings, one on Wednesday night and one on Thursday night, which. They recently merged due to low attendance on Wednesday nights. All in all, they've had about thirty people participate. They've been focusing on what they need to learn more about racial justice for themselves. And then talking about how they can approach that same issue with their children. They've been talking about white privilege, white fragility, racism in the media are. In the media, the children, their children consume current events related to the election and the recent events in Washington. I'm looking at them all through the lens of racial justice. We also have been reading the SO books and talking about how we want to talk to their children about those books. And let's say they asked people to commit to regular participation through January. And then they would reassess to determine how to move forward. And looking at taking input and figuring out what has been helpful and what hasn't to think about how they want to move forward. In that same, same space. The next meeting is on January twenty-first. They'll review the surveys. And they also mentioned that it's been really helpful to get to know other parents who care deeply about racial justice and want to bring their children into the conversation. And I believe that is all thirteen groups.
Thank you, Mr. Berestow. Are you, is that the end of your comments?
Yeah, I, I, well, I appreciate all the reporting. I'm just wondering as far as an administrator, Drew and Steve, you can chime in or Beth or any of you that are on. How many meetings are you having to attend out of those thirteen? And that question comes from. The enhanced learning committee hasn't met at all. And so trying to find a balance, is, is that a challenge for you right now with so many different groups? Or are you able to balance that? And is there any way to consolidate certain? Information getting in and out and conversations if that is becoming overload of meetings for administrators to attend? Including the SAU one, do you know?
I can go out there and I feel fortunate that. This is the first time I think I've used the word fortunate and COVID in the same sentence. I feel fortunate that our schedule has been so disrupted by COVID because it has opened up an opportunity to have. And participate wholeheartedly in meetings and the, the DEIJ right now. It's, this is the only work that we have. Really continued on without stopping since March. I do, I mean, if, if I'm going to be completely honest, once things return back to normal, whatever that's going to look like. I think it will be difficult to, to manage the. The needs, I guess, in, in all the committee meetings. How we might merge things is a bit of a mystery to me.
So, so I guess based on that, given the context of hopefully a full return, right? By, by next fall and, and things, you guys attending many of your more. Meetings that are on this list for except everything from board members to having more policy meetings, et cetera. I wonder if that is something you want to bring back to that district level, full DEIJ committee and take a look at the thirteen groups. And moving forward. As you progressed from that January to end of school year, is there a way to work through that? So when you set up for the following year. Could that be a manageable amount of meetings for people to attend as administrators? I would just ask you to consider that because I'm, while I am so excited that there's so many things going on. It does make me a little nervous for all of you trying to balance with, as you said, when we return to school full time, I don't. I don't see how you're going to be able to do all these other committees that normally are running as well as all of the ones you just talked about. So I just would ask if the DEIJ representatives aboard and people on this meeting. Could at least entertain that conversation and see how to continue this work with validity and integrity, which it deserves. As well as make sure that the administrators can balance that load as we return to school and all the other. Committees and et cetera start to come into play, kind of to Neil's point last night at the joint board meeting, I think. You know, sometimes there's so many meetings, it almost becomes overwhelming and then you can't dedicate what the time you want to, to any of them. So I just.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna concur that I think this year it's manageable. I think that, that has been productive, but I also think your point's well founded, Esther. And that it would behoove us to look at how to streamline in it as we move forward.
Can I make a quick comment? As a member of the DEIJ committee. A year ago, it was one of the committees. That took the, the most hours and. I wanted to dedicate my time to it. I think it's been such an enormous undertaking. To have been there when we were, when Drew and Steve and I sat down as our little subcommittee amongst all the people. And we had to just start thinking about the different groups. I mean, there's been such. A major amount of work done and so many people are involved. It's really. Amazing to me because I was only there at the beginning. Now that Patty's transitioned on, it's. It's wonderful to hear how many people have stepped up to make these things work. And perhaps this is about building the foundation about the curriculum planning. We could, we were just talking about it. You know, a year and a half ago. And we had some, you know, six-hour retreats together to kind of put this. And so maybe this is a product of needing to build the foundation and then shifting into the next mode. Where some of it's already built and we can develop from there. But I, I just think the work that's been done. From our administrators, the board members, the teachers, the parents, so many people have been involved. I just thank you for everyone who's taken the time to do it. It's hard work and very meaningful.
Or, uh, thank you, Sarah. I, I, it's, it's unbelievable work and I, I mean. The. There are so many, like you said, there are so many folks that are, are involved and have jumped in just embracing the, the work. So. But for what it's worth, I, I. If you want my two cents, having somebody at the district level to help organize this work as a district, I think will be. Hugely beneficial to whether, whether you want to call it streamlining, organizing, delegating. I don't, I don't know what the right word is, but I think it would be a huge benefit to the district.
And I just like to add, I'm incredibly grateful and extremely proud of the district for all this work. It's wonderful. Thank you. All right. Does anyone else have anything like to say? I think, I think we're done. This could be a record for this group. All right. All right. Are we good? Done?
Yeah, record. Thank you all.
All right. Does it have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Patty, you got it. I'll second.
All right, Tom Bones.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Nice rep.
Hi.
And I'm, I'm, thank you all. Stay safe and be well.
Thank you. Good night.